Plans, lots of plans.
All right.
It's seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. Mr. Murdoch?
Turn it over to Julie.
Thank you. So before I get started on the selectmen's budget, I did speak with Matt Lode, Director of O R Y A, and explained to him, I guess, what the concerns, what the concerns of the ABC and the Select Board were, that the detail that you received for the administrative costs didn't really provide you with enough explanation. And so that you were asking if he could please provide a greater breakdown. So he said that he would discuss it with Ben Jeans and the treasurer and get back to me. So I did make that request.
Seems like an unusual answer.
Yeah.
It's a storm.
Yeah. Well, I mean, he was at a conference at the time.
Oh, okay.
He was talking on the phone, so... Okay, so you should have in front of you a revised, it says up at the top in red, revised insurance G M Rs. They handed it out to everyone. So that's the sheet, those are the sheets that we're gonna work off of. So the first section of the budget, the board of selectmen, really the only item that I have comments on is the last one, which says B O S applies. All of those expenses in fiscal nineteen, the $928, were T C B C expenses. There really wasn't anywhere else to put that. I am anticipating that the T C B C is gonna continue to have expenses as they move forward with their charge, so I've increased the fiscal twenty-one request to a thousand dollars. The financial administration, salaries are all pretty straightforward. As you may recall, department heads don't put salary increases in their budgets. The Select Board makes those decisions based on cost of living, C P I. The department heads do performance evaluations of their employees and the Select Board reviews those. So later on in the budget under what we always refer to as the forty-one ninety-nine general government account, you'll see fifty thousand dollars, which represents about a two percent COLA for everybody. Again, it's really just a placeholder. So starting with the professional audit, we, this year, changed to Plugs against Sanderson. We've been using Vashon for the last three years, and we have a contract with Plugs against Sanderson for fiscal nineteen through fiscal twenty-one. That's the audit years, fiscal nineteen to twenty-one. They are in the process of wrapping up the audit, actually, for fiscal nineteen. The next item, legal notices and advertising, it's getting very expensive to put things in the newspaper, which we are required to do with a number of things still, including public hearings. Also, even if we want to just put something online, it's still quite expensive. So for example, the average ad in Seacoast Media Group is two hundred and seventy dollars. That's just to run it one time. That's not a Sunday paper. That's just to run it one time. It's three hundred dollars plus to put something in the Concord Monitor or the Union Leader. So it is just getting very pricey to do that.
What are those things that we have to put in?
Again, public hearings were required. The statute still requires us to put it in a local newspaper. If we're hiring, we will put it online. We don't generally put those in the newspaper anymore. So that's what those costs are. The next item, printing, those costs are for the voter's guide. You should all, at this point, be familiar with the voter's guide that shows up before you go to the ballot in March. Last year, it was a little more expensive than previous years because we had, I think it was an additional two colored pages to show pictures and give information relative to the town center plan that was being proposed in warm articles. So I'm leaving it at twenty-five hundred and getting anticipation that T C B C is gonna once again want to put additional information in the voter's guide. Dues and subscriptions, that covers things like the Government Finance Officers Association, the N H M A, M M A N H, M M A N H, which is the Municipal Managers Group, the New Hampshire Assessors. I think I, oh, I also put in there the Town Secretaries and Notaries, I think a number of you were aware of that. That gets renewed every five years, seventy-five dollars in fiscal nineteen that had to get renewed. In training, the Select Board has been, over the past few years, been conducting department head training. Maybe even once a year we've been doing that, where we all get together and have someone come in and do, maybe a half-day training session for everyone. So that was in there. In fiscal nineteen, that budget also covered a hundred and twenty dollars for the cemetery trustees to go to training. In the B O S budget above, there was eighty-one dollars. That was actually for John Tapp, and I think he went to a training class. So again, from time to time, committee and commission members go have training, and that comes out of these budgets somewhere, because they don't have a budget for that. The mileage line, that's Denise occasionally runs here, there, and everywhere. Joanne drives to the bank in Durham at least once a week and gets reimbursed for mileage. And then, actually Scott Buggie, I think, had a number of mileage reimbursements probably from the work that he was doing on the heritage, could've been the Heritage Commission, probably the T C B C.
Probably the T C B C, the Heritage Commission gets reimbursed.
Yeah, so volunteer dinners, but I know that those were the three people that got reimbursed out of that for fiscal nineteen. Conference and travel is exactly what you would imagine it to be. That covers the cost for the Town Secretary and I to go to the Primex Conference once a year, the New Hampshire Municipal Association Conference once a year, and then I go to the Municipal Managers Conference once a year. Postage. So postage meter that's in Town Hall is utilized by a number of different departments, committees, and commissions. The cost for the postage itself is charged to the using department. So in other words, it's the Town Hall tax collector. When she mails things out, she punches her code in. However, it costs a little bit over twelve hundred dollars for the meter rental and the maintenance agreement on that machine. So those are costs that are borne by this budget. Office supplies, again, probably what you would anticipate and expect that they would be. Copier paper, again, is not something where the cost is distributed. So when the tax collector, town clerk runs tax bills, runs motor vehicle registrations, lien notices, and that utilizes many thousands of pieces of paper, that's all covered in this budget. We don't cost that out. This also covers check stock, tax forms, envelopes, and the like. The last three, very small budgets, kitchen supplies, you know, we can add that, reference materials, which is zeroed out, and new equipment in the event. I don't know, somebody maybe needed a new calculator or pencil sharpener or something. I suppose we would maybe use Telephone landlines, again, those are for all of the landlines in Town Hall, which also include Town Clerk Tax Collector's office, the fax machine. Computer software, again, exactly what you would imagine it to be. From time to time, we have to get updates on software. Computer services, that covers a few things. The internet for Town Hall, the internet for the Highway Department, the I T support. Again, you all may recall that, before I got here, so eight years ago, the town had a full-time I T director. He resigned in two thousand, the end of two thousand and eleven, and then a decision was made to just use an outside firm, which actually has worked out very well for us, and I think everybody is pretty satisfied with that. We use Back Bay Networks in Dover. That also covers Map Geo. I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to go on the website and use Map Geo. It's more than just the tax maps. It layers various other things on a number of towns. Municipalities in New Hampshire are using that now. That is through the Strabber Regional Planning Commission assists us with that. Printer copier fax, that covers the Town Hall, the large copier. And again, those costs are all covered in this budget. We don't expense those out, even though a lot of other people use that photocopier. A couple of years ago, we actually ended up purchasing the copier that we had. We had been leasing it, and we see, and we saw an enormous reduction in our costs once we owned the machine. So hopefully, it will keep running for quite a while, because it's relatively inexpensive to run when you own it. The next line, alarms. That covers fire alarm monitoring for all of the buildings in what we'll call the Town Center Complex, so Town Hall, the library, the annex, and the annual inspections of those alarms. It also includes the annual elevator alarm inspection, which is actually quite pricey, somewhere between eight and nine hundred dollars a year. And then some occasionally, we, so for example, in fiscal nineteen, we added some panic alarms in this room. So that was an expense that came out of that one.
Where are they?
Yeah.
I think they're in there. No? Police chief didn't? Oh, okay.
I don't know. I don't know. Do you know what I was... No, I don't know either, so...
We need to get a lesson on the panic alarms?
At least you gotta find out where it is.
Where is it, so you can push it?
You're gonna run into a road and there won't be no switch in there. They found it down the doors on... So is that the escape room over there, the panic zone?
Yeah, the escape room. The next item is I T maintenance and repair.
I thought it was meals and rooms?
No, maintenance and repair. Occasionally, we have I T equipment repaired, although typically, if something's at the point where it needs to be repaired, it needs to be replaced. We actually don't do a whole lot of computer training. We may want to talk about that in the coming year, but we don't typically do too much of that. And then computer hardware, again, you know, we have a schedule and a cycle for computers, PCs that need to be replaced. Generally, they're probably five years before they need to be replaced. So in fiscal nineteen, Town Clerk Tax Collector, the Highway Department, the Town Secretary, all got new PCs. The projector downstairs had to be replaced. I think the projector up here occasionally needs bulbs and various things replaced, so that's what that is about. We are in the third year of a three-year contract with Municipal Resources, Inc., for assessing services. As you may know, we do not have a town assessor, per se, that's an employee. We contract with Municipal Resources, and they provide, actually, a couple of people for us. Sean is typically in the office and out in the field, and then Scott Marsh will also be in the office and is available. He has a cellphone on days when he is not in the office for residents that have questions that we can't answer. And then the mileage, again, it covers mileage for the assessing, we'll call them assistants. Sean, again, a number of years ago, it's kind of getting to be where I think I can say many years ago, the Town Hall had a car, and the assessor, if it was available, would use that vehicle. But we got away from that model, and he now just gets reimbursed for his mileage. Legal expenses, I've left those where they are. I'm hoping that this year, we actually don't see the number of legal expenses that we have seen in past years. Again, knock wood, I'm not aware of anything right now, other than the lingering Fairpoint case.
Still going on.
Well, it's going to the Supreme Court.
Again? Didn't it go once?
It just did, no. New Hampshire's Supreme Court.
Is the whole McDonald thing done, that's over with?
Yes. That finally, we finally resolved that. The property on Steppingstone Road was sold at sheriff's office.
Really?
Changed hands.
So someone else has it now?
Someone else owns that, yes.
That legal expense always went in Karen's budget, though, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So this is other stuff?
Well, occasionally, there would be some other things relative to Mr. McDonald and the V R C that were not planning and zoning, typically revolving around tax issues. But yes, you're correct. The bulk of it was in the planning and zoning market. So personnel, we received the insurance guaranteed maximum rates. They typically come, and as they did this year, in October, both from Primex and from the Health Trust. And the increases are not bad. We barely had an increase in the health insurance, and I think the dental insurance was two point nine, three point nine percent, which is pretty good. I've heard that some towns were seeing much larger increases than that.
Did you notice, is that for the same plan coverage, or did they reduce something in the plan to make it...
Our plan?
Stay cheaper?
No, it's just, we didn't change plans.
No, I mean...
Hmm, I know what you mean.
Typically, yeah. If the price doesn't go up, they increase the deductible or something.
No, no, the plan is the same.
It's the same plan?
Same plan.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that was pretty much statewide.
Was it, yeah?
Yeah.
It could be the same.
I was, was very minimal on the health, and even more minimal on the long-term and short-term disability. Quite frankly, I don't remember what it was on the life insurance portion. Wasn't shocking at all.
So, yeah, this year, I did not put in the extra family plan into the health insurance budget, which as you all know, you hear me say this every single year, makes me nervous. But I did not put that into the budget. So if someone shifts from a single or two-person or the buyout to a family plan, we're gonna see a relatively significant increase cost. But this is budgeted based on the lives that we currently have, plus the police officer, the new police officer that the police chief is asking for.
He's the only one that's looking for a new person that would be eligible for...
Correct, yes, yep, yep.
We haven't had fire yet, though, so do we know?
He's not asking for new full-time people.
He's not, okay.
Nope. I think right now, we have, what, five people getting the buyout, which, as you can see, makes a huge difference in what we have to budget for health insurance. Other costs are staying relatively stable, social security, Medicare, retirement.
Shall we get to the other page? What happened with workers' comp?
I will tell you what happened with workers' comp. I had a little "ah" moment. So let's talk about unemployment first. Similar issue, not as big a dollars. Primex gave us a premium holiday for fiscal nineteen of two thousand forty dollars. So that's why you see that the budget was three thousand ten, and we only spent three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Unemployment, you mean...
Where?
Unemployment's a state, state...
Not for us.
Oh, for you, it isn't, that's right.
Right, we're different.
We're different.
We get to be different in terms of where we dispaly. So, workers' compensation.
What?
In fiscal twenty, we received from Primex for both eighteen and nineteen, a premium holiday in the amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars, which we knew about in time to apply for the fiscal twenty budget. Now, I suppose I could have hidden that piece of information, budgeted for the full thirty-six or thirty-eight thousand, and then when the premium holiday arrived, it could've just been in the form of a check that went into the general fund. So that is why you're seeing the big seeming increase between fiscal twenty and fiscal twenty-one. It really, there really wasn't, except that we were fortunate to receive twenty-one thousand dollars in a premium holiday.
What is a premium holiday for nineteen?
A premium holiday is when, after they've finished a year, they do their analysis and determine that they took in more money than they needed. Now, I don't know if any of you recall, a number of years ago, the lawsuit that was initiated by the firefighters against the then local government center, when it was, we'll use the word discovered, revealed, that both Primex and the Health Trust, because they're not typical insurance companies, they are nonprofit self-insured pools, if, they're not supposed to rack up a whole lot of money. They are supposed to return the money to their members.
Send checks for several years.
Right, right. So that's what that is, that Primex is returning money to us that they did not need.
Is that gonna happen this year after we get through this?
I hope so.
Yeah, maybe.
I hope so. But that's what that, that's why that looks so wonky.
Blue Cross Blue Shield actually does that now, too.
I think there's a law. They have to...
I think there's a law.
Unused portion of percentage of what they collected.
How come the Oyster River doesn't do that?
I mean, they do, just hide it.
You even get it.
For a number of years, I think this is predated my coming year, the town has paid for fire accident and health insurance for the volunteer, not really volunteer firefighters, but the call firefighters.
Call firefighters.
Who might not otherwise have that coverage. Background checks. For new hires, we do criminal background checks, and for a number of employees, we do physicals, pre-employment physicals, and then for some employees, we do drug testing, if they are C D L drivers. So a criminal background check now is running about fifty dollars per employee, and the physicals are anywhere from fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars each, depending on what level and what we have to do. Special awards and flowers and food and meetings, they could even be one account, because they typically pay for very similar things. As you may know, we now have Volunteer of the Year award, so this pays for the plaques for that. In fiscal nineteen, this paid for Randy's retirement party. Came out of the food and meetings. Occasionally, the town will send flowers to someone, for example, if a parent has passed away. In fiscal nineteen, we actually, the sign that's on the pavilion for Randy Stevens, that came out of this account. The volunteer dinner gets paid out of these accounts, so that's what gets paid out of those. Government buildings, maintenance and repair, again, what you might imagine, we have a number of buildings to take care of. Just a couple of the things that are given expenses in the course of a year. The elevator for this building, that's seventy dollars a month to have a maintenance agreement on that. To service all of the various H B A C units in all the buildings, that's thirty, four hundred dollars a year. Pumping out the septic tanks for this building and the buildings in the Town Center, that's about eight hundred and eighty dollars a year. And then we have a pest service that keeps control of the various critters for all of the buildings, and that's actually, that's about three thousand dollars a year. We're gonna take a look at that one this year and see whether we might wanna do something else with it, although I don't think any of us want the mice in the buildings again, which we used to have.
Is that, do you know who that is?
J P P, yeah, yeah. Very nice, they're very nice, but we may want to take a look at that.
Yeah, just check. There's lots of others.
Uniforms for the building maintenance staff. At one time, they did have uniform rentals, and I have encouraged them. They, they just are not interested in that, but I've encouraged them that if they want to buy T-shirts, you know, town T-shirts or blue chutes that they all use for work and get reimbursed. I have limited success, but I actually do still encourage them, because of course, the highway employees and the transfer station employees have uniforms provided for them. Mileage, that essentially, in the government buildings, covers the mileage for both Kristen and Bill as they drive all over town, or drive to Lowe's, or drive to Abusha Hants. Again, they use their own vehicles. We do not have town vehicles for them. The supply line is essentially for cleaning supplies, again, for all of the buildings. Energy Committee you met with, Sustainability Committee you met with. We have to provide bottled water for our buildings because of the arsenic content, but we have an account with W B Mason, and so we only pay two dollars and eighteen cents for the five-gallon jug, which I know...
That's not a bad deal.
Which is very nice.
Can we get that, too?
I have arsenic.
Now I have to do something about it, yeah.
Obviously, the electric bills are the electric bills. Just one note, on the tennis court, the board voted last year to disconnect the power at the tennis court. The only thing that we could determine that it was being used for were the Memorial Day events, the outlets there. So I've let everybody know that the electricity is no longer there. Insurance, property liability, again, this has gone up seven percent. That's the guaranteed maximum rate from Primex. It may come down, or who knows? We may get a premium holiday. We actually did get a premium holiday of eighteen hundred dollars that we applied to the fiscal twenty invoice, so that's nice. Other general government, again, as I explained at the beginning, that's a placeholder for the Select Board. We call it the wage pool. It would cover essentially a two percent COLA, not only the, if they decide to increase wages, but also the ancillary costs, retirement, and FICA. Southeast Watershed Alliance, this was added a number of years ago when Dave Seaterholm was on the Select Board and also a member of this organization. But he, he hasn't been on that for quite a while, and then no one ever came back to us and asked us for funding, so I zeroed that out. General assistance, nothing, not recommending any changes there. Again, I understand that if you look at what we budget and what the actuals are, there's a discrepancy. But again, as I do every year, remind you that we are required by statute to help people if they come to us for help. As you can imagine, the rents are, yeah, astronomical, so, and we're required to help somebody if we ask for help. So fortunately, fortunately, again, we haven't seen a huge increase to those expenses, so let's, let's hope that stays that way. We have a part-time welfare officer who handles most of our work for general assistance via telephone contact. She will occasionally make appointments with people and we'll see her at Town Hall. But a lot of what she does is referrals, again, to the fine agencies that came to you a couple of weeks ago, especially CAF. So that's why we don't overspend our... So, that's why we don't overspend our welfare budget. Patriotic purposes, again, it's the bountings, it's the flags. I kept it at five hundred dollars. You know, that one kinda just goes up and goes down, depending on if there's a year where, for some reason, we have a lot of tattered bountings and flags. Uh, so I've kept it at five hundred dollars. The two bonds, the safety complex, uh, fiscal twenty-three will be the last payment on that, and then fiscal twenty-four will be the last payment on the transfer station. So, even though they seemed very far out when you first built these buildings, it's, uh, they're actually, it's getting close. Uh, and again, obviously, the bond interest goes down, uh, every year, so. So, does anyone have any questions?
Couple of quick ones.
Yeah?
On the, you were talking about the copier.
Mm-hmm.
Does the CIP have a replacement copier in their schedule?
No.
What will you do by it?
Well, what we did before was lease one.
Yeah, but it's, as you said, that's expensive.
It is.
It's actually cheaper in the long run if you buy it.
Right.
Rather than leasing it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just wondering if there's something in the capital plan so that when the one that you got decides it's gonna.
No.
Not copy any longer.
Or should there be?
They go to the library.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, I, I, I don't know what budget that would come out of. There isn't, there's certainly no capital reserve fund that would cover a photocopyer.
I agree.
So I guess we just keep crossing our fingers and.
Well, how much is the new one?
Yeah. Oh, depends on the machine.
Like the one we have?
That one, the one we have, oh, what did we pay for that? I think we maybe ended up, did we pay five thousand dollars for that? I can look that up.
I think it was used.
But that was used.
Yeah, how much would it be?
New one's probably ten.
It would be at least ten.
Yeah.
Could be more than that, depending on how many bells and whistles you get with it. I mean, quite frankly, I think that the one that we have at Town Hall, we probably didn't need everything that we have, but we have it, so.
How long have you had it joined, you know?
They got it right before I got here, so, well, let's just say January two thousand twelve.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I'm good.
And it's getting there.
I just think maybe someone ought to be looking at what it's gonna, what they're gonna do if that drops.
Well, it dies, not even. Right.
It, it will. Um, the other question I want is on assessing. This is the last year, the contract, are we going out for bids on that contract?
Yeah. That'll happen March, April.
It's in my question.
Okay.
On conferences and travel?
Mm-hmm.
That was minus four hundred. Is that? Do you know, I mean, is much money gonna?
Yeah, I produce it, you know.
You don't think there will be?
I mean.
You never know.
There's the typical, right, there's the typical three conferences that it covers every year. I mean, the.
And that'll cover it.
And that will cover it, right. I'm probably, I'm kind of thinking about going to the NARA conference in, I think, is that March? Is that, sorry?
It's one in May.
Oh, maybe it's May.
Right.
Um, the, um.
Northeast.
Northeast Resource Recovery Association. There's a lot of, um, a lot of things are happening, and happening at the state level, relative to SW and recycling and composting. And Steve and I had a big conversation about that today, so. We're gonna keep moving forward with all of that.
Julie, when we talked about the, uh, I don't even know which department it was, but we talked about the impact of changing the light bulbs in this building?
Yes.
Okay.
I have that.
You do have that.
I do have that.
Did the lights get changed in the, in the other buildings, or just this one?
Um, the public safety complex and the transfer stations. The reason, and I saw this on Facebook, the reason we didn't do Town Hall, I mean, I would like to do the lights in Town Hall, just because.
Go on Facebook.
Uh, why didn't we do Town Hall?
Oh, okay.
We didn't know whether we were gonna redo it in Town Hall.
Because there wasn't gonna be a big enough, um, savings for, um, Eversource to reimburse, or give us any money, or rebate us like the Co-op did for the other two buildings. I, I would like to change them out to LEDs, 'cause they're better lighting, but we also need to do something about where the lights are. So, for example, it's kinda dark where I sit, it's dark where Denise sits. Um, but again, you know, in terms of kicking the can down the road, we keep thinking, we're gonna renovate this building, and it doesn't make sense to put money into new lighting until we know what we're doing with the building. But the building needs new lights. Building needs new lights. Um, but to your question, uh, the public safety complex, I ran the numbers from January, oh, I, the last time I did it was through September. Um, now, the January bill actually covers the middle of December to the middle of January. The project wasn't really started until the end of January, so that didn't cover very much. And then it took until February to one-hundred percent complete both buildings. So, you just hold that in your heads, because this is, you know. So, from January through September, on a year-to-year comparison, so in other words, comparing what we spent in eighteen versus what we spent in nineteen when we converted the lights to LEDs. We saved, for the public safety complex, twenty-two thousand seven kilowatt-hours, uh, which was three thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. The final net cost to the town for this building was seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. So, you know, we're on track to have it pay for itself in three to four years, which is what they had told us would happen. Transfer station, um, less usage, just remember that, less usage. Um, kilowatt-hour savings, thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, two thousand three hundred and thirteen. The net cost of that building was eighty-seven hundred dollars, so. About to say it payback. So, so it definitely was worth it. Now, obviously, there's temperature variations, and I mean, there, there are other variations probably other than the LEDs, but, but it's so stark that you have to attribute most of that to switching over to the LEDs, so.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Scott.
Um, 'cause I'm, what is it? We're not detail-oriented, we're.
Yeah, well.
I'm gonna be detailed.
Maybe you're the detailed-oriented.
Okay, I'll, I'll be the designated detail. All right, can you talk to us about, um, the training? How, how is the training different in financial administration? And also in, what's the other one?
IT?
Yeah, that there's different training ones, you said, that you use. Why can't we maybe put them together? What's the difference? Who discharged one versus the other?
Um, I suppose financial administration training is kind of a catch-all.
Okay.
Um, any kind of training. And then I suppose the IT training would be specific to computer training. Honestly, Scott, I think that's a holdover for when you had a department head who was an IT director and had his budget, and that's why there are those, those two separate things.
Maybe we could combine them.
But we could certainly combine them.
Um, okay, under personnel, health insurance, how many people are buying the, um, what is it, uh, the FSAs? How many people are using those this year? Or?
Six.
Do you plan to use six of them? Okay.
I heard the answer, Scott, I didn't hear the question.
The FSAs and the personnel, um, flexible spending accounts?
Just, sorry. Everybody might remember why we started the FSA. Uh, a number of years ago, the select board, um, moved to a less expensive health insurance plan, because at the time, the health insurance rates, you know, you were seeing those double-digit increases every year. So, uh, this was, I think, a couple of years after I've been here, maybe one year. So, we moved to a plan that had lower premiums, because they had higher co-pays, um, and higher co-pays for drug costs. So, at the time, in order to soften the blow for employees, we put the FSA in place, and the town funded for a year and a half, uh, some of those accounts for the employees. Um, but then after a year and a half, the town stopped funding the FSAs, and now it's entirely up to the employees as to whether you wanna have an FSA or not. We try every year to get people to sign up for it. I do not know why people don't.
It's a no-brainer.
It's kind, it is a no-brainer.
So, what's the hundred and ninety dollar, is that fee or something?
That's a fee, yeah. That's just, that's the fee to administer it for them for us.
It has a tax for it.
Yeah.
Um, under government buildings, M and R? Is it meals or whatever?
Maintenance and repair.
One of the things that, that you said it covers in terms of, you know, the units in this particular building, in terms of the air conditioning, heating and stuff.
Right.
That, and it was surprised to us that found out that the police department saw it, doesn't work. So, we're not covering that, right? Under that M, maintenance.
Well, there's furnaces in this building.
Okay, but there's an air conditioning unit. We're not covering that because it's not working, right?
I would assume that this does not cover the window air conditioners, correct?
No, no, I mean, the.
Yeah, the one that doesn't work.
Right, if they're not working on it.
Okay, so it's, it's not covering them?
If it was under that.
Right.
Maybe they should've. I'm sure they would've looked into whether it was, I mean, should, I guess. If it wasn't under that coverage, they should, yeah.
Do you remember in terms of how much that particular unit is? Because there's something wrong with it, and it's very expensive to fix. Do you remember how much? Anything?
I thought that it wasn't gonna be able to be fixed, that we were gonna have to replace it.
Okay, but how much to replace it? Do we know? I, I'm not, I'm kinda putting you on the spot, but I don't know if you remember.
Well, I kinda wanna say twenty thousand, but that sounds like a lot. But, what I remember is that it was a lot of money.
I think Tom said it was like something significant like that.
Right.
When I talked to the chief, he didn't say it was a lot of money.
Right.
And what it would be, it's cheaper to leave that one there broken and put a new one in someplace else where it could be easily accessed rather than where that one is. I did not look at where that one is, so I can't answer that. It's somewhere in the roof. But apparently, a lot of the cost is you gotta take a lot of stuff.
Getting it out, right?
I don't get it out of there.
Okay.
And it was probably a bad plan to put it there in the first place.
Okay.
So, what he did, what he said to me was that it'd be much cheaper to put in a big unit on the outside and just hook it up to the.
The ducting.
The ducting inside, leave the broken one broken wherever it is.
'Cause one of the things I'd like to do, when the selectmen talk about this, is to propose a, um, a fund that's just for maintenance stuff. We had, um, an instance on the transfer station about the Sistern system. Has been, has been inspected for a while, but none of our capital reserve funds fund those kinds of things. So, if we had one that's designated for maintenance of buildings and equipment, then we could use it for things that come up like that, so.
Yeah, it would be a special revenue fund.
Yeah, so, we could put money into it each year to cover those kinds of things. So, I'll propose that to the selectmen when we talk about, you know, finalizing the, finalizing the budget, but I think that would be something that we could use, so.
Scott, while you're talking about funds for, for special purposes, can we maybe circle back to the conversation about the copier? Would there be, is there anything existing in the local for the copier? Would you have, would there be any point in putting, in having a fund for hire? Or is that just something like?
But how much is the surplus? I mean, it could be taken out of the.
No.
No?
No. Well, you could have a warrant article to buy a copier, is that what you mean? And then take it out of the undersigned fund balance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've taken money out of the undersigned fund balance for the furnace in this building.
Yes, that was an emergency, correct?
So, we could, yes, there is opportunities.
They would have to be via a warrant article, but yes. I don't know, but, yeah.
Well, just in terms of what we've experienced in the last few years, we've usually, like this year, we gave back two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So, there's some wiggle room within the budget. So, if we had bought ten thousand dollars, it's not gonna like.
Yeah, exactly.
Put it into this rep, so.
Right, there's no point in setting up a right. Yeah, there'll be a little bit.
So, what you're saying that the unexpended balance is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, about?
In nineteen.
In nineteen, yeah, yeah.
And the year before that, I don't, it was.
A little higher than that, I think.
Yeah, so.
And so what is the surplus, about two million, is that what?
Two.
What are the things?
Little bit, little under two million now.
Yeah, yeah, so. But the thing is also, if it's seven years old now, you might wanna think, let's plan on replacing it.
Yeah, it's more than seven, it was bought used.
I would say the life expectancy of those copiers is ten to twelve years.
It is new, and then. It was new in two thousand twelve.
Okay, okay.
And, did we do the shuffle down last time? Did our old one go to somebody else?
Um.
Or?
In two thousand twelve, yes.
I don't remember.
I mean, it was traded in, is what I, again, that was crystallization.
It didn't go down just one of the departments?
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
No, no.
And the same thing with planning, uh, planning the zoning, build inspection there?
She leases hers.
Oh, she leases hers.
That's not that old.
Yeah. One of the things they're doing where Morgan and I, Scott, is they haven't, I never saw them before, expendable trusts.
Yeah.
And that's kind of, I think, what you're talking about, where they put the money in the expendable trust, but it has to meet the specific requirements of the trust, and the selectmen can withdraw it through the trustees, through the, an expend, an expendable one. They can draw it through the trustees as long as it meets the criteria for which it was passed.
Right.
And then they just, when they have to draw one, for they have an emergency like that, then they just put money back into it to bring it up to the level they decided to carry it at.
Yep.
Exactly.
I never saw such a thing before.
They have them, so. I don't have any other questions.
I have one question. Down in the government buildings, heat safety complex?
Mm-hmm.
Don't they have?
Well, you may remember that the second floor was not completed at the same time as the first floor.
Yeah.
And so there is a heater on the second floor that heats this room, and that's what this pays for.
But.
'Cause they complained about it.
It's part of the safety complex begin with, why isn't it in the safety complex budget?
Um, 'cause they complained about it.
No.
The chief of police complained about it, so did the fire department complain about it, that they were paying for heat that they weren't using.
But the two chiefs paid for their heat in their areas, yeah. So, it's just for the.
But in the end, they'll end up, then we're gonna take over these areas at one time.
Well, when they do.
They still use them.
Well, when they do, they can.
I'm just curious, it's just the way it sticks out there by itself.
Yeah, that's what that is.
People would ask at the public, is it, are you kidding me? There's a little heater up there, he's putting the budget? Hey, can't you stick it somewhere else?
It's a little.
Isn't that something? What's the rest of the building?
And that's what heats this room?
Oh, would you say yes to the oil? The rest of the building's oil?
Uh, nah, yes, uh, yes, I think so.
Where's the heater?
Generated propane, but others heat, I don't.
Right.
Um, do you have any recommendations for the trust funds that you kind of deal with? The reevaluation, re-benefit?
Uh, to be honest, I haven't done that deep analysis yet.[1721.02]